Alright. I now call to order this December nineteenth, twenty twenty four, regular board meeting. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to comply with the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible, indivisible justice at all.
Mr. Tessa, can you call the role, please?
Ms. Lee. Ms. Lee. Dr. McKay. Mr. Schwartz, here. Dr. Shelton, here. Ms. Snodgrass.
Here.
Ms. Vitale.
Here.
Ms. Wedeman.
Here.
Dr. Larson. And Dr. King.
Present. I would like to note that, um, Dr. Larson is out due to, um, illness and Ms. Lee and Dr. McKay due to prior engagement. Now for the, uh, official minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the official minutes from the November twenty first, twenty twenty four, regular board meeting?
Shelton moved.
Schwartz second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Can I have a motion to approve the official minutes from the December second, twenty twenty four, annual reorganization meeting?
Shelton moved.
Schwartz second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any approved? Alright. Oh, thank you. Looks like I forgot. Let's go back to, I'm gonna have our board members review the, um, mission and goals.
Yep. Missions, the mission of the school district of Haverford Township is to educate and to inspire a community of lifelong learners who become well-rounded global citizens. The pillars of our educational system are that our school environment is safe and nurturing, that excellence in education is a shared responsibility and partnership with all district and community members, that whole child development is vital to our educational system, that supports and conditions exist whereby all students have opportunities to grow and excel in the areas of academic, technical, and career and social and emotional learning, and that our decision-making process is student-centered and student-voiced is valued.
The twenty 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 five district goals are social emotional wellness, to produce a community of empathetic and resilient learners with skills to socially and emotionally flourish, prepare contemporary citizens to modernize and expand learning experiences, to prepare students as critical thinkers, problem solvers, innovators, and designers within a complex global society, diversity and inclusion, to establish a culturally diverse and inclusive educational experience that develops sociocultural proficiency.
Thank you. My apologies. Thank you for bringing that up, Dr. Shelton. Alright, so now we will continue. Um, I would like to note that item six H, which is listed as authorized official resolution, solar for schools program grant will be removed from tonight's agenda and placed onto the agenda for the January ninth meeting. Um, given the significance of the discussions that have taken place over the last several months, and one-third of the board is unable to attend this evening's meeting, as president, I am moving this item to the next meeting for a vote. And now we will hear from our students from Haverford Middle School, from representative Naomi Ludwig.
Good evening. My name is Erin Gruen and I am pleased to provide the board with an update on the exciting developments I have from middle school this evening. First, I'd like to offer my congratulations to our new board president, Dr. King, and our vice president, who's unfortunately not here, Dr. Larson. The winter season is off to a great start. Our boys and girls basketball kicks off their season on Tuesday, on Tuesday, and our wrestling team had their first match on Wednesday. Ezra and everyone is infusing about the start of the season. This week, our student government is holding spirit. Each day has a fun theme and it has brought a lot of energy and excitement to the school. Today was twin day and a lot of people looked exactly alike. It was great to see so many participants from both students and staff. Here we are at the midpoint of second quarter with winter break just around the corner. The marking period will wrap up quickly when we return in January. Speaking of winter break, everyone is eager, looking forward to the well-deserved rest. Personally, I'm excited about my winter break where my family's tradition is where to go to my grandma's house on Christmas Day and one of the kids of my family hands out gifts like sandclaws. Thank you for the opportunity to share the update tonight. I wish you all a joyful holiday and a happy new year. Go Birds!
And now from our Haverford High School student representative, Austin McConnell.
Good evening, everyone. As we approach the holiday season and prepare for winter break, I'm thrilled to be back here in the Oakmont Building to share the latest updates, achievements, and news from Haverford High School. It's been incredible corridor filled with student success, school spirit, community engagement, and tonight, we celebrate all that makes Haverford truly exceptional. Firstly, I want to give spec- special recognition to Mr. Leon Smith, one of our outstanding history teachers who has just been named the twenty twenty five Pennsylvania Teacher of the Year. At Haverford, Mr. Smith is more than just an educator. He's a mentor, a motivator, and someone who consistently goes above and beyond to make learning meaningful and engaging for our students. This recognition is a testament to his dedication and the positive impact he has on our community. Congratulations, Mr. Smith. To start off, this year's athletics have been nothing short of outstanding. In the terms of winter athletics, ice hockey is ranked first in the Central League, with the team just recently securing victory over Avengrove in overtime with a score of three to two. The boys and girls swimming and diving teams had a great meet against Conestoga this past week, falling just short of victory. However, on the bright side, the Fords broke four school records in this meet, two of which were broken by Caroline Whitney, breaking the women's fifty-meter freestyle record and the women's four-hundred-meter freestyle record. The quarter relay of Matt Cassidy, Chase Rose, Sam Graff, and TJ Hayes broke the men's two-hundred-meter medley relay record. And lastly, the relay of Sam Graff, Hobie Whitney, and TJ Hayes broke the men's two-hundred-meter medley relay record, or sorry, the four-hundred-meter freestyle relay record. Congratulations to the Fords on a great meet. Girls cheer won first place at Springfield last weekend, continuing their undefeated streak. Boys basketball beat Upper Darby and Ridley last week, and they will play in a home doubleheader tomorrow night with the girls' basketball team, who also just beat Garnet Valley in the Battle of Undefeated Teams at HHS on Tuesday night. Wrestling beat Lower Marion and Garnet Valley in their first two meets in the Central League competition, and Haverford Wrestling will be hosting a wrestling tourney at home all day this Saturday, during which over two or three hundred wrestlers will be in attendance. This past week, shot putters Lucy Filkin and Colin Quirky finished second and third at the Race in the Valley. Continuously, indoor track will be at UPenn's new indoor facility this January. Lastly, I'd like to give a special congratulations to the girls' cross-country team, whose hard work and dedication this past season led them to a Pennsylvania Interscholastic Athletics Association state title. In the arts, our fall performance of the pajama game was a resounding success, captivating audiences with stellar performances and showcasing the creativity and dedication of our student actors and production crew. Continuously, over the past two days, we have had impressive performances by our chorus in their annual winter concert. I personally love listening to the holiday classics, as well as watching how the chorus promoted audience engagement with their finish-the lyrics segment. Unfortunately, I need to brush up on my holiday lyrics as I got five of the ten correct. The energy during Red and Gold Week was contagious with pep rallies, themed days, and a renewed sense of school pride bringing everyone together. My personal favorite day was the Anything But a Backpack Day, where students were encouraged to break the traditional way of carrying school supplies and bring almost any other object carried to books. Students brought things ranging from crock pots, normal pots, to empty Lego boxes. Events like this remind us how special it is to be part of the Haverford community, but also show how students at Haverford are brimming with creativity. In the realm of clubs, NBHS is hosting a coat drive where they're accepting gently-used coats of all sizes in order to donate to shelters and places in need. WHHS, our student-led radio station, celebrated their seventy-fifth birthday earlier this month on December sixth. Our robotics team recently represented Haverford at a regional competition where they showcased their innovative designs, problem-solving skills, and teamwork. They continue to push boundaries in STEM and inspire us with their creativity. The African-American Cultural Enrichment Club hosts an impactful cultural awareness program that celebrates diversity and fosters meaningful conversation amongst students. I have found that it's initiatives like these that make our school welcoming and inclusive space for all. The holiday food drive loved by the National Honor Society is well underway. This effort reflects the true spirit of the season as we come together to support local families in need, and I encourage everyone to participate and try to make a help, and try to help to make a difference in our community. Tomorrow, the Haverford Sports Media Club is hosting its highly anticipated dodgeball tournament, an event guaranteed to bring excitement, energy, and school spirit to the gym. Students and staff will go head-to-head in intense, yet friendly competition, showcasing their dodgeball skills in a fast-paced and fun environment. Whether you're playing on a team or cheering from the sidelines, this is the perfect way to come together as a school community. The tournament kicks off tomorrow, so don't miss your chance to be a part of the action. As we head into winter break, I want to take a moment to reflect on all that we've accomplished at Haverford. From the classroom, to the stage, to the field, and beyond, Haverford High School continues to be a place where excellence, creativity, and compassion thrive. None of this would be, none of this would be possible without the hard work and dedication of our students, staff, and family. Thank you all for your unwavering support and commitment to our school. I wish each of you a joyful holiday season, a restful winter break, and a bright start to the new year. Together, let's keep building on this momentum and make Haverford an extraordinary place to learn and grow. Thank you.
Thank you both. And for now, um, the superintendent's comments, Dr. Rishu.
Thank you, Dr. King. I think we will begin this evening with some recognitions. Uh, first, that of the National Merit Scholars. We have our scholars here this evening. Uh, Mr. Dunnegey and, and Dr. King will be at the podium, and students, I will try to guide you along here so we can pose for a photo.
To, uh, recognize our National Merit semifinalists and commended scholars. Our National Merit is, uh, students who have excelled in the PSAT test. They're either in the top one percent with a top three percent of the entire state. So, the National Merit semifinalists, there's sixteen thousand in the United States of America. We have close to sixteen thousand high school students in Delaware County alone, so just to give you a little perspective on that. Also, our commended scholars are in the top two to three percent, uh, of the, the state, and thirty-four thousand students across the nation receive this honor. So, we're very, very fortunate to have such a large group. We also, uh, this is, there's only one little disappointment today, and I hate to bring this to everyone's attention, but this is the second highest ever amount of semifinalists in Haverford school history. So, we're disappointed we didn't come in first. It is true, back in two thousand fifteen, we had one more semifinalist than we did today. Uh, I got so excited when I got the scores in the summer, I, I geeked it up a little bit and started, uh, going back in all the, uh, the stats, and I thought, this is, this is the group. So, we lost by one, but, uh, we'll be back. So, every ten years, we have this amount of semifinals, so that's a pretty big accomplishment. So, I'm just gonna say the semifinals, don't come up yet. Uh, we'll do each person individually. Jacob On, Jack Carfree, Sam Graff, Josh Larden, Aiden Liu, Maxon Marku, Maya Schmidt, and Jorge Tessador are semifinalists. Uh, so that's our largest number again since twenty fifteen. Uh, and before I call each, each individual, uh, person up, all these students that I'm about to call up either play a sport, are in band or course, are director of a club, uh, are very, very involved in something besides academics. So, I don't wanna embarrass them in any way, but they are very involved in school, they're leaders in the school, and they're all great people. I can vouch for their character. So, we're gonna call them up one at a time, uh, get their certificates, and a little gift from the school board. We appreciate the school board, uh, giving them a gift. It's well-deserved. Jacob On. We do have a bunch of students who couldn't make it tonight because they are busy, but I'm gonna go through their names even if they're not here tonight. Jack Carfree. Sam Graff. Josh Larden. Aiden Liu. Maxon Marku. Maya Schmidt. Jorge Tessador. Eli Black. Eli Back, sorry. Lauren Baxter. Gian Bonvare. Lena Fadul. Andrew Fideko. Prudence Frain. Vicky Lynn. Eleanor Nagel. Isabella Polycarpio. Lila Spoker. Caleb Lee. May Weaver. And Vincent Yee. And if you guys could all come up over here, we'll get a picture. Sure.
In that category of recognitions tonight, we also want to express, um, our appreciation for board leadership. Uh, Bridgette Wedeman, who served as vice president and president of, of the board, uh, and Antoinette Snodgrass, who served a term, two terms as vice president of the board. Uh, there's a lot of, um, work that is done by the president and the vice president in, uh, communication between the board and the superintendent, uh, attending a lot of meetings, representing the district, interacting with, uh, with staff, uh, and we appreciate the time that, that you did that.
We have certificates for both of you, so Ms. Snodgrass, can you join us, please?
I just wanna really quickly give my appreciation, um, for Bridgette Wedeman as well. Um, there's so much work that goes into being the president that I don't think that everyone sees day to day. Um, but since I joined the board in twenty nineteen, Bridgette was in leadership and she really just went above and beyond in that role. Not just for me, but for everyone, from taking new board members out to dinner, to making sure the people got integrated into their role, um, helping them understand what the role is of a board member, which, you know, you can take those courses, but it's really difficult to know before you're actually here. And Bridgette, again, just was so welcoming, not just to me, but I saw it for every single person that was new to the board. Most of, most of the board is new, and, um, under Bridgette has learned how to become a board member because of her. So, um, you know what, I think what people don't see is the appreciation breakfast that she goes to. You know, going to the, the new teacher induction, um, going to all of the different, uh, graduations that we have in all of our different schools, uh, the stepping up ceremonies and, and showing up in ways that, um, the community, like, some members of the community see, but the entire community as a whole doesn't get to see day to day, and showing up when, you know, nobody gets to see it because we're on calls with legal, or whatever it might be. Um, but, so I just wanna say, um, I was, I got the privilege of being the vice president of the board for two years, and the only reason that I was able to do that was because of Bridgette's leadership. Um, and so I'm just so incredibly thankful for the last six years, I think, that, that you had either the, the president or the vice president role. So, um, I mean, think about the things that happened during that time was, was, was COVID and getting us through that, and, um, and, and the, the Linwood Building, and now all of these different infrastructure, um, improvements that we have. So, you know, um, I, I think it's a role that is, is difficult and, and not often in the spotlight in a way that's, um, filled with gratitude. So, thank you so much. Um, and at the same time, I think, um, that Latonya and Kristen are going to, um, absolutely meet, uh, you know, the demands of the positions that they've come into, and, and I look forward to the next chapter, um, with the board. So, thank you.
I, yeah, I didn't know if I was supposed to say something, but thank you so much for the kind words, and, um, I, it has been a privilege to, uh, serve on this board in, in a leadership capacity, and I also extend my, um, well wishes to Latonya King and Kristen Larson for stepping up into a leadership role and look forward to the new direction and dynamic on the board under their leadership.
A few, I usually have some public service announcements. I'll make just a few of those announcements, and then we will move on to, um, the final item in the superintendent's section being the twenty-five, twenty-six high school course select, course selection guide. So, you guys are up in a few minutes. Not even a few minutes. As Austin mentioned, uh, we are thrilled to have Mr. Leon Smith, uh, on our staff as, uh, the Pennsylvania twenty twenty-five Teacher of, of the Year. Uh, at the January twenty-third meeting, we will recognize, um, Mr. S- Mr. Smith. That's when, he will be available, uh, to join us that evening, uh, so that we can celebrate this accom- this accomplishment. Believe it or not, kindergarten registration for September of twenty-five begins in just a few weeks, January thirteenth, uh, at seven PM. All registrations are completed online. Uh, registration instructions can be found on our website. Uh, just, and as a reminder, to register, that new student must be a resident of the school district of Haverford Township. Uh, proofs of, proofs of residency are required, and five years of age before September first of the school term for kindergarten. Uh, congratulations to our, um, National Honor Society students who've once again demonstrated their commitment to our community through their Thanksgiving pie sales and other fundraising efforts. Thirty-five of our families, thirty-five families benefiting a total of sixty-one children, um, will receive school supply kits, hygiene kits, breakfast bags, a variety of gifts, um, including games, toys, clothing, gift cards, um, and so, so much more. So, we congratulate our, uh, National Honor Society. Probably don't need to remind people that winter break begins tomorrow, um, at, at the close of the school day. Uh, but as the winter break, um, is about to begin, I hope everyone finds time to rest, recharge, uh, and create some special memories, uh, with, with family and friends. And we look forward to January second, although not too forward too quickly, uh, January second when we will be back, back together. Uh, and now, on to twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, program of studies, uh, for the high school. Ms. Saxa.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, everyone. Mr. Dunnegey and his team and I are, uh, very excited to bring to you this evening the twenty-five, twenty-six Haverford High School Course Selection Guide. Uh, joining us for the presentation this evening are John Baradoni, Assistant Principals. These are, are the assistant principals of the high school. Uh, Roe Edmiston, Heather Panero, Charles Dete, and of course, Mr. DeCina. and of course, Mr. DeCina contributed to this guide as well, and we thank the whole team for their work in putting this together, which is really a comprehensive set of resources and courses. We're going to begin just on the next slide there. I don't know who has the clicker. There we go, thank you, Alex. With just a general timeline of how the Course Selection Guide is developed, and then I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Dunnege. Typically, a curriculum review will yield a newly proposed course or several courses and revisions during the prior year. The high school team is always getting feedback and exploring possibilities of new courses. And so this year, we're here to present to you new English Language Arts courses, as well as some minor updates. Next year, we'll be back presenting new science courses and some minor updates. It all follows our curriculum review cycle. We typically bring this guide before the Board and the public each December. We develop and update the courses throughout the fall, gathering input from teachers and students. And then additionally, we review the guide to determine if there are any deletions, which you'll hear a little bit about later in the presentation. So tonight, we'll present the proposed additional courses and any minor course revisions. Two meetings from now, on January 23, we will ask for the Board's approval of this guide. And once this approval is granted, we will publish the guide for students and families, and they will use it for their course selection process beginning in late January and February. So now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Dunnege, our High School Principal.
We're going to show you a book that tries to make 2,000 students happy, 250 teachers, 4,000 parents and guardians, the greater community. Some of our, our best critics are here tonight for their history class, our students. So you're going to hear just a little bit about some of the changes. We definitely put in 10,000 hours into this book, either physically, mentally, spiritually. We put in 10,000 hours each year into this book, because we have to get it right. You have to get it right. Students' college and career readiness depends on this. So we take this very, very seriously. Our teachers put in such a good job of trying to be current, trying to be standards-based, and trying to be student-friendly. So they do a great job with the courses. We have, I just want to point out a couple of teachers here tonight. Mr. Mullin, our English Department Chair, Ms. Montgomery, and Ms. Coulson. They've done, our English Department, you're going to hear about that, but I just wanted to give them a special shout-out tonight. They, they have put in numerous hours since, since this time last year, just to try to get our English current, to get our English, to get our students to continue to love English, to love writing, speaking, listening. So you're going to hear a little bit about what we have in store for our English. And we appreciate the Assistant Principals coming here tonight. Mr. DeCina, is that his dad's birthday? Or he would be here also this evening, just in case anybody is concerned where he is tonight. So without further ado, I'd like to bring up one of the architects of the book, Mr. Baradoni. He's known as Mr. B. at the High School. He's going to run you through some of the things we are doing at the present time.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Dunnege. So this current year, we started the courses you see on the PowerPoint in front of you. So this year, we are bringing about Advanced Place of African-American History for the first time at Haverford. That will be starting this semester, semester two. Mr. Smith will be teaching that course. He brought that in, another testament as to why he is the Pennsylvania Teacher of the Year. Haverford Sports Media, which was an offshoot of our very successful sports programming activity, has now become a course and has grown from that. They're doing our dodgeball tournament tomorrow, as you heard, and that course has done amazing things, taking students to places they've never been. They were down at the Link, they got to see the Eagles pregame show, they got to meet people down there. So they have been all over learning the ins and outs of the broadcasting and sports world behind the scenes. So a really neat course that's running this semester. The Level 2 additions, we're always looking to expand our current courses, and sometimes that brings about a second level of a course. So Sports and Entertainment Management started a couple of years ago. This year, we brought about a second level of that, so it took the course even further. And the same along the lines with Construction Technology, Drone Aviation, and Practical Woodworking. Very popular elective courses that have now taken the step to the second level, so students can continue working in those areas as well. For this upcoming year, 25-26, one of the major changes, before we get into English with Ms. Connolly and the English Department, we are proposing that all of our half-credit elective courses, our .5 elective courses, be converted to alternate-day options. We've noticed over the past few years especially, now that history has become a fourth credit, not an optional course, they need fourth credit, and a lot of times they have to take two different courses. And along with the other elective courses we offer, many students don't have the opportunity to take every course in our catalog. So one way that we are going to go about fixing that is offering every course that is a .5 credit elective as an alternate-day option. So our music students, who have had a limited variety of courses they could take over the past few years, our special education support students, who have had a limited amount of courses to take, all will now have the option to take the entire 110-page course catalog, as opposed to just a smaller version of the alternate-day courses. So it really will not affect anything we do day to day. It does not require any additional staffing or anything along those lines. We're just giving every student in our building an opportunity to take every course in our catalog, as we feel that every student has that right. So it really brings equity among all the students, no matter what different courses they've taken and what programs they study. So we are really excited to move that forward this year. And the other change that we're making in the guide is Transition Math and Algebra II Career Track. We are converting those courses into a financial algebra course. So Algebra II Career Track is not recognized by colleges as an Algebra II course, and Transitional Math is kind of that course for students more in the technical route. So those two courses, with the work of our math department, have kind of combined them into financial algebra. And what that will do is bring about a lot of the basic math skills they've learned in Algebra I and geometry, and kind of bring that into a business sense. So a lot of skills that they will need in the real world, from banking to budgeting, to any other, you know, creating a job, interest, things like that. So they're going to work on that, as well as possible other things that might come over from Keystone remediation and other things along those lines. But the biggest change we're making this year is the proposal of the alternate-day .5 credit electives to the alt-day. And I'm really excited to propose that, especially for our music students and our special ed students in that regard.
Mr. Baradoni.
Yes.
For people who may not have a child at the high school level yet, is it possible for you to briefly describe what that means?
Sure. So at the high school, we off, we operate on a block schedule. So four blocks a day for an entire semester. So our classes are 84 minutes long, semester-long courses are one credit. The .5 credits are quarter classes, so they're only nine weeks long, God bless you. So they're nine weeks long, and they're only .5 a credit. So they take it every day for a quarter, and then they switch to a second elective class the next quarter, and take that every day for the quarter. In this case, they will take both electives the entire semester long. So we, we operate on an A-B schedule. So on A day, they would take maybe Financial Literacy, and on B day, they would take Ceramics. And they would take them every day for the entire semester. A couple of things that will do is it'll increase the time they're with the teachers, so it'll increase relationship building along those lines. Plus, it will give the students kind of a change of pace day to day, so it's not going to be the same thing every day. So they will take that for the entire semester, and therefore, that would be the two different electives. And together, they would get one credit for that at the end of the semester. Thank you.
Can I just follow up? And could you provide an explanation of how that benefits, like, the music students?
Absolutely. If you look on our current course catalog, you'll see in the very back, right before the index, there is one page that lists about 20 different alternate-day options. And out of the different electives we offer, which are upwards of over 100, right now, only about 20 or 25 are really accessible to our music students, because we just didn't have it set up in that regard. So really, music students could take their requirements of PE9, or Financial Literacy, or Health 10, and then they might take an AP course, either Gov. or Psych., alternate-day years, as they get to junior and senior, but not every student's an AP Psych. or an AP Gov. student. And a lot of times, those students would end up taking either a Study Hall, or they would take an early dismissal as they got older. Or in some cases, we've had a lot of music students drop music completely, because they really didn't find the need, and they didn't find the ability to take other courses that would kind of complete their schedule. So this will absolutely offer all of the catalog electives that we have for those students. So we feel it will keep the music department growing. Students will stay in the music department, and they will be able to pick every elective that we have. So instead of just that one page right now of 20 choices, they now have the entire catalog that will be able to be chosen from for them.
Was any thought given to how it might affect a student's homework load, having now more classes at the same time, as opposed to, you know, the one class for nine weeks and the other class for nine weeks? And whether that would maybe burden students?
Sure. Those classes all come every other day. However, a lot of our electives are not really homework-driven courses, like our core courses. Our core courses, for the most part, are not changing. They're still every day for the entire semester. So those still remain. So they would still only take two or three a semester in that case, and then they would alternate that with their electives, which are more hands-on, more activities-based, more classroom-based, because they're doing different projects, things like that, that in many cases can't come home. But when they do come home, there, obviously, we do take that into account. And we still think with the lower amount of courses, at the most, they would take maybe five, that's still a lot lighter of a load than the traditional seven or eight course schedule that some students take in other high schools.
Yeah, I think I'd be interested to hear after, you know, if this moves forward, if there was a difference in the homework that, that the students saw, and if it was a burden because of the change. Hopefully not, like you're explaining, but maybe for, you know, seeing what happens.
That's definitely something we will, we'll keep an eye on, and definitely make sure we survey the students as that happens.
Thank you.
Thank you. Some other Level 2 additions, the ones we started last year were really exciting. These two courses also have a Level 2 component now. Teachers are excited to take these courses to another level, Art History 2 and Film Study 2. Film Study 2 will be talked about more with the English group. However, they're going to, we already offer those as one. Now we'll offer a second level of them, so students can take those classes even further than they do now. So I will now, if there are no other questions on that, I will turn it over to our esteemed Ms. Connolly and the English team to talk about the English courses. This is yours.
All right. Thanks, John. So we're excited to be back here tonight to share the update on our English re-envisioning for 11th and 12th grade that you just saw in the course catalog. Our teachers have worked tirelessly to make this happen, and we're really excited tonight to do that. And as we said, we've got a few, three of our English teachers representatives who are here tonight. Nope, I'm going to go backwards. There it is. Okay. "To begin, we're proposing adding the AP Seminar course for 10th and 11th grade students next year. This course is centered on argumentation and synthesis, with students learning in groups and individually, learning through an inquiry model. Students in 11th and 12th grade will follow the AP Seminar course with AP Research in the following year. This student, this independent course is different in that the teacher acts as a facilitator. As students follow the inquiry model they learned in AP Seminar to apply it to complete an independent research investigation. These courses will be rolled out, beginning with AP Seminar next year, and AP Research the following year, to give kids a chance to take the first piece that they need to take. These choices will be added to the AP Language and Composition and the AP Literature and Composition courses that are currently operating and are very popular." So we, we knew that these next two courses would be the, the right answer of things to add in the AP level for our students. And this will also satisfy the requirement for 11th and 12th grade English. So to remind you, in the past, our students had 11th grade English or 12th grade English, and there was no student voice and choice. And you've heard me speak often about the fact that that component of preparing contemporary citizens is really important for our students. We really believe in it, and we've just been trying to figure out how to do that in English. And no surprise, the teachers came up with a great, the great idea. So, students will have, in addition to those AP courses, and you'll see them at the bottom of this list on the right, they're going to have six new courses to choose from, or AP, of course. The names, the titles of the courses are Heroes and Rebels, Diverse Voices in Contemporary Short American Literature, The Underdog, Man and Monster, American Voices for Power and Justice in Literature, and Visions of the Future: The Interaction of Technology and Society. So what is interesting about the way these courses have been designed is they all have the same goals, the same prerequisites, and the same essential questions. And they'll have the same units, literary analysis, argument, synthesis. You can see up here what the goals will be. I'm not going to read them to you. But it's, it's interesting that the core of each of these courses is built on the same foundation. And then what we're changing is the course, the text the students will be reading, so that they have the ability to read something they might be more engaged in than when we were choosing the text for 11th grade English or 12th grade English. So here's a little look. And I just want to let you know that the books you're going to see on these following slides are the books that are being considered by the teachers. Tonight, I'm not proposing any of these texts, but you'll be able to see the variety of the kinds of books. And in this year's course catalog, we're not going to list the titles, because they haven't been proposed to you, they haven't been adopted and approved. And we need that, we need the course catalog to be able to keep moving this year. But in the future, we want to add those titles, because we think that in addition to the descriptions you're about to see, it will help the students to see the types of text that they'll be reading. So here you go, you can see the covers of the books, and I'll tell you just a little bit about what those, the small type says. In Heroes and Rebels, heroes from different literary periods and genres will be what they'll be diving into and analyzing how they see the world and themselves. And reading, this is a course that Mr. Mullin's very involved in, and it has a lot of texts that they're proposing or that they're considering for this. Are books that you're familiar with, that we're already studying in some of our courses. Oedipus Rex, Hamlet, Othello, Beowulf, Song of Solomon, things like that. So those will be familiar to students. Short American Literature is exactly what it sounds like, where students will be reading from various perspectives and different genre, including short stories, novellas, and poetry. And so short, the different short literature that they'll be reading will be taken from a variety of literature texts that have those types of things in them. The Underdog explores the limitless types of underdogs that occur in literature. And it's, it's sort of an interesting perspective to look at, you know, Cyrano de Bergerac, and maybe Hidden Figures, or The Great Gatsby, or maybe Seabiscuit. So not all of these, again, are definitely the list, but it's giving you a little bit of an idea of how the books may be different in the different courses. For Man and Monster, we think about how monsters are lurking in the fringes of society, and they're going to analyze how monsters serve as symbols of societal fears, cultural anxieties, and personal struggles. And some of the books that they may read for this are Frankenstein, Macbeth. This course may also have some parts of Beowulf and others. The next one is American Voices for Power in, American Voices for Power and Justice in Literature. Still sort of playing with the title of that one. And in this one, they're going to be examining author's craft and gaining insight and empathy for marginalized people and communities, while discerning and discovering the connectedness of individuals and groups. And they're considering books such as The Autobiography of Malcolm X, The Sum of Us, Their Eyes Were Watching God, is a book we've read in the past. And then the final one is Visions of the Future: The Interaction of Technology and Society. It's a representation of science and technology in classic and contemporary literature since the Industrial Revolution, and discovering what it means to be human, which is interesting, of course, when there may not be humans. So The Martians, I, Robot, there are a few different books that they're considering for this one. So in additional offerings to that, we're going to also have some new electives, Writing for Your Future. And we think a lot of kids could take advantage of this. They're working on writing their resume, doing interviews, all kinds of writing that will be applicable for college and career and beyond. And Public Speaking: The Twenty-First Century is exactly what it sounds like. Learning how to perform speeches, persuade, be dramatic, all different kinds of reasons for public speaking. And this tonight, of course, is another example of public speaking, where you're getting up in front of a group and you have planned what you're going to say. And you need to present your ideas in a coherent and thoughtful manner so that everyone understands. And sometimes the audience asks questions and asks you to clarify, which was happening with Mr. Baridoni. So this is the type of thing that students will also get an idea of how to do. And then finally, Film Study Two. You did just hear that we're gonna be adding the second level of Film Study, which is just diving deeper into Film Study. The prerequisite will be Film Study One. And this came at students' request. They're loving Film Study. They wanted to go into it for another year. And they wanted to take analysis of film to the next level. So we're gonna be back in January with a whole list of books, and I can't wait to do that. We'll have books for you to look through. You, of course, will get them ahead of time. But we can answer any kinds of questions that you may have about the different courses. Questions? Are you as excited as we are? I think so. Students in the audience, does it sound like a good idea to be able to have choices of what you're taking in 11th and 12th grade? You like the idea of choice? Yeah. Okay.
Our, um, course, our course guide here is always A Point of Pride. It's amazing to me the robust offerings that we have. And love what's been introduced this year. I think the Quarter Class Alternate Days is a really thoughtful approach to expand the options for all of our students regardless of their courses studied, just making all of these amazing electives. I think the hardest thing must be trying to figure out just which few classes you can actually fit into your schedule over four years 'cause there's way too many good ones to consider.
I think this is really exciting and, you know, I, I, th- this looks like a college sort of, you know, curriculum. And it's really impressive. And I just wanna thank you. You know, I've been on the board for a short time, you know, for a year. And you've always done a great job presenting the curriculum.
Well, thank you. Well, it's a team effort, right? It takes a whole, whole group of people. Please, Ms. Montgomery and Ms. Coulson and Mr. Mullin, will you stand up, please? Because these are teachers who have spent a lot of time on this curriculum. And they are representing a department that has spent a lot of time on the curriculum. Ms. Hartman couldn't be here tonight, and she and Ms. Montgomery are the curriculum leads on this project for English. So we're very, very proud of them.
Yeah, I just wanna say thank you so much for, for doing this with the English curriculum. I, I think as a student, to get excited about what you're going to take is so important. And obviously, English is, is a staple of any school's curriculum. But to have these choices and to be able to be excited about, you know, this is, this is what you're interested in and this is really gonna speak to you. And, and looking at this from the lens of how are we gonna speak to the students and get them these critical skills that they need, but in a way that's accessible and interesting. And so it's, it's quite clear how much thought went into this. And we could just sit by and say, this is 11th grade English, this is 12th grade English. And these are mandatory classes, but that's obviously not what's going on here. And just really, again, speaks to the, you know, what, what sets Haverford apart. So thank you so much, and the, the entire team really appreciate it.
It's back to the team because it came from the teachers, so it is all about them. Thank you.
And I just wanted to add, when I think about many moons ago, when I was in high school, picking out courses as a student, I looked at what might be on the syllabus, what assignments we might do, how much homework we might have. Not at all taking into account the skills that, that were being developed. And so on this side, looking at this presentation, I'm excited to see the skills that are gonna be developed to be used beyond Haverford. And I think that is what makes amazing, makes us amazing at Haverford is that we are absolutely with intention, living up to those goals of developing these well-rounded citizens. So thank you.
I just love the entire idea of Thymology, of, of replacing, you know, two English courses with books that may or may not interest students with an idea of like, hey, do you like, like monsters, underdogs, you know, what's your, you know, I mean, we want kids to read. And I think that, that, you know, there are certain books that within school that, that I love, this book, you know, there's that were like, you know, slog. And, 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 you know, I think really putting, you know, 'cause all of these themes have great literature. And, and, and so I just love how this is set up, how it's arranged. We replace two courses with eight. So thank you very much for this. This is fantastic. Can't wait for my 10th grader to be able to make some of these choices. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Next, we will move on to item four in the agenda, which is Public Comment. And so the Board values Public Comment. There are two opportunities on the agenda for members of the community to provide public comment during the meeting. The first opportunity on the agenda for Public Comment is to allow members of the community to speak on items listed on the agenda. The second opportunity on the agenda allows members of the community to speak on any topic that may or may not be listed on the agenda. Public Comment allows residents of the township to speak for three minutes. A timer will be set at the start of your comments and an alarm will sound indicating that your time has been completed. Should you have any materials from members of the Board, we'd ask that you would please leave them at the end of the table with Mr. Tessa for later distribution up to the Board. Please note that if appropriate, a member of the administration may follow up with you at a later date. Prior to starting your comments, we do ask that you would state your name and confirm your residency, and then the timer would begin. I do have in my notes that there were two individuals that signed up to speak for Public Comment during this time. However, it, as listed here, it's related to items that have been moved to a future agenda. And so if those two individuals would, would still like to speak, you're more than welcome to do so. We would just move that portion of public comments to the end of the meeting. Okay? And so aside from the two that previously signed up that'll be moved till later, I do wanna offer an opportunity if there's anyone that would like to speak on items related to the agenda that may not have had a chance to sign up. All right. Having none, we're gonna continue to Board Reports. The first listed for Board Reports is the Delaware County Community College, which is Dr. McKay. Given Dr. McKay's absence, we will save a Board Report for the next meeting. Five B is the DCIU, which is Dr. Larson. Given Doctors Larson's absence this evening, we will save those comments, or that report, rather, into the next meeting. Six C is Legislative Council, Dr. Shelton.
The Legislative Council for December was canceled and the next meeting is January eighth.
Thank you. PSBA, Ms. Sweeterman?
Yeah, the PSBA provides updates on, on programs they sponsor and opportunities for schools. One that's upcoming is schools can currently apply for America 250 PA, which would bring historical reenactors and storytellers into K to fourth grade classrooms as a way to celebrate Pennsylvania's role in the 250th anniversary of the founding of the United States. I learned that that's called a semi-quinsentennial that's coming up. So an opportunity for a school, if interested. Pennsylvania School Boards Association is one of the sponsors of that program. There is, for Board members, ongoing Board Officer Training available online, a variety of workshops and classes about our Board roles. There's an in-person opportunity for building stronger school communities through civil discourse that will be in place in Mechanicsburg on Saturday, February first. There is also a recording available on the PSBA website for their Solar for Schools training that they did on November 20th with the DCED. And Haverford and all the schools are encouraged to submit stories to the Great Pennsylvania Schools to promote good things going on. And I know PSBA in its news blurb featured Mr. Leon Smith as Teacher of the Year, but lots of other good things going on in Haverford, too, that we could highlight statewide.
Thank you. And if you would also continue for Finance and Facilities?
Yes. Finance and Facilities met on December 12th in attendance for myself, Dave Schwartz, Chris Shelton, and Latonya Lee, as our whole committee was there. There were a variety of topics on the agenda. The first was about our bus fleet. We will be replacing aged and diesel vehicles with nine new propane vehicles. And at that point, we will have 100% propane fleet with no diesel, which is quite an accomplishment in a positive way that our district is contributing to the environment. This is part of a planful, scheduled replacement of aged vehicles. And with the proposal for the new vehicles, there will then be three years where they don't schedule needed purchases. But the purchases that we will have a chance to review at a future Board meeting, the plan is that that would use 2023 bond proceeds that we have already raised for that purpose. Then we heard from our owner's rep, Central, our CB Development Services, and Crabtree Ruhrva, our architects, with a good presentation laying out the plans at Cooper Town and how they're evolving and getting more finalized. The plan is that the, the plans will be getting new cost estimates in early January, and that will prepare for the Act 34 booklet. That is a process in the approvals and preparing for a new project at Cooper Town that will be ready for our January 23rd meeting. And then things are on schedule in that plan development to go to bid in March for the Cooper Town project. On tonight's agenda, there are, there's a small amount of change orders for the Chatham Park project. Structural upgrades to the library window wall at a cost of about $6,500. So those are on tonight's agenda. Then we talked about the bond issuance with PFM, and they are here tonight because it's on our agenda to pass a parameters resolution for $30 million as the next phase of financing to provide the funds to finish the renovations and expansion of Chatham Park, to expand the Haverford Middle School cafeteria, and to fund the first part of Cooper Town's project. And PFM reported that the district is still looking financially strong and expects to maintain our bond rating when we go to market there. Another topic was the solar facility site assessment. We had another analysis from the Celantano firm to review the options to apply for Solar for Schools grants. And their analysis pointed to applying for grants for Linwood and Chatham Park. And they had considered Cooper Town not to be feasible because of the sloped roofs. And that resolution was on the agenda for tonight and tabled to a later meeting. There are two other things that are on tonight's agenda. One is E-Rate, which is funding resource. And the project that we're applying for is for network wiring for Haverford High School to upgrade that. And then there is a proposal on tonight's agenda for the Trans-Tax Advisor that would help us secure rebates or credits for using alternative fuels. And that one is funded, the advisor would get 25% of any savings, credits, or rebates that come to the district. There were a couple of informational items. The year-to-date financials are going as budgeted. The audit is on pace for the end of the year PDE's filing, and that the Board should expect to see the audit in January. And we would then vote to accept the audited results. And looking ahead to 25, 26 budget, that will be first presented at the February 13th Finance and Facility Meeting. And the plan is that we would not exceed the Act One index, which is 4% for the coming year. And the Board will see a resolution to commit to that at the next Board meeting. And then there were two topics of discussion. One was considering EV buses and, and grant opportunities and how that may fit into our fleet and, and support for busing. And then started a conversation about a district-wide environmental assessment, asking what's the goals, how would it be measured, what would we be willing to spend? And expect that to be a continuing conversation as we think about our environmental goals. And it was a long, robust conversation, but the committee meetings are all recorded and the video is available on the district website.
Thank you. Item five F is the Curriculum and People's Services Meeting. In Dr. Larson's absence, we will hear that report at the next meeting. Or five G Policy Meeting, Ms. Nodgrass?
Uh, Dr. King, you took over for me for that meeting, which I very much appreciate as I was not able to attend, so I'll kick it back to you. Thanks.
Okay, so we do have, um, later on in the meeting, we have Policy 331, 617, 618, and 915 that we will be talking about later. To clarify, 915 will be a first reading, which is the Booster Club Policy. For item five H, I would invite members of the Board that have attended community events since the last meeting to give a, a short report. I believe, Mr. Schwartz, you had something?
Sure, thanks. This is the unofficial Board Liaison to Cub Scouts. We went to another Cub Scout, then, as part of their community, the part of their, their My Community Adventure for We-Belows. They, they invited public officials in there to talk about what they do, how they were elected, those kinds of things. Kids, once again, had, had great questions. They are very curious about this, had some excellent, you know, things to bring up. They have their own issues that they wanna bring up, actually, but it's them to come and speak at a future Board meeting. So maybe we'll see a couple of Cub Scouts come in here and give their ideas. But it was, uh, it, it, it was very nice. Look forward to doing more of that, hopefully.
Thank you. Are there any other Board members that have an event to share? Yep? All right. We can continue.
Just a question. Would you be able to give a report on the updates on our superintendent search?
Sure, I can give a brief update. We are continuing the process as we had planned to. And we are in the process of beginning to review applicants that have applied. And so, so far, we are going in the right direction. Thank you. All right, so number six, Finance and Facilities. Six A brings us to the Bill List. I'll accept a motion to approve disbursements for payment totaling $2,843,220.71.
Sultana moved.
The tally's second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any, uh, any, any disapproved, sorry. All right. Six B, Change Orders. I'll accept a motion for, to accept the recommendation of the Owner's Representative, CB Development Services Incorporated, and authorize the change orders listed below totaling $6,529.60.
Schwartz moved.
Schwartz moved.
Shelton second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item six C, Acceptance of Donation. I will accept a motion to accept a donation from the Saint James Church of Haverfordtown, Pennsylvania, in the amount of five hundred and thirteen dollars. The funds donated to help students afford instruments or instrument rental at the Manoa Elementary School.
Vitale moved.
Shelton second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item six D, The Idea Passed Through Money's Agreement. I will accept a motion to approve a twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five IDA passed through money's agreement with the DCIU totaling one million, two hundred seventy-five thousand, three hundred and six dollars. Pending solicitor review.
Shelton moved.
Weedman second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item six E, The RFP Solicitation for Network Wiring Project. I will accept a motion to authorize the proper officers of the board to prepare and advertise documents for bids for network wiring replacement at the Haverford High School. Pending solicitor review under the E-Rate program.
Schwartz moved.
Shelton second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item six F, Alternative Fuel Tax Credit Service Agreement. I will accept a motion to approve the agreement with Trans Tax Advisors for services related to the alternative fuel tax credit at a rate of twenty-five percent of revenue collected.
Weedman moved. Vitale second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item six G, Resolution Authorizing the Incurrence of Non-Electoral Debt. I will accept a motion to approve the attached parameters resolution for the twenty-twenty-five bonds by the Haverford Township School District.
Shelton moved.
Schwartz second.
Moved in second, and this is a roll call, though? All right?
I see we have our bond advisors here. If anybody had any questions about the parameters resolution?
You ready?
Thirty million dollars.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Larson? Dr. Lee? Dr. McKay? Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Dr. Shelton?
Yes.
Ms. Snodgrass?
Yes.
Ms. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Weedman?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Number seven, Human Resources. Seven A, Retirement and Resignation. I will accept the motion to accept the following retirements and resignations as listed.
Schwartz moved.
Shelton second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Thank you to some of our longtime employees here, Sandra Connolly, Jeff Nesbit, Marie at Okmott, it's, they've, yeah. I'm not, I was trying to transfer his name. I, I, I never get it. But, um, yeah. Thank you very much.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item seven B, Appointment. I will accept a motion to approve the following appointments as listed below contingent upon receipt of all necessary clearances, including Act One Sixty-Eight of twenty fourteen.
Schwartz moved.
Vitale second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item seven C, Leave of Absence. I will accept a motion to approve the following leave request.
Schwartz moved.
Shelton second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item seven D, Approved Negotiated Agreement with Education Support Professional Association. I will accept the motion to approve the negotiated agreement between the school district of Haverford Township and the Haverford Township Education Support Professional Association, effective July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, and authorize proper officers of the board to execute said agreement, subject to legal review.
Shelton moved.
Vitale second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item eight A, Educational Service Contract. I will accept a motion to approve the following educational service contract for services provided, provided to staff within the district.
Shelton moved.
Schwartz second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item eight B, Educational Service Agreements. I will accept a motion to approve the following educational service agreements for district students. These agreements cover reimbursement for privately obtained legitimate educational services as incurred by the family for the benefit of the student.
Shelton moved.
Schwartz second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item eight C, Twenty Twenty Four, Twenty Twenty Five Contract Ratification. I will accept a motion to ratify the following contract for Wilson Reading Program Level One tutors provided to the district for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
Vitale moved. Weedman second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Can we hear a little bit about how these Wilson Reading Program tutors fit into our curriculum?
Sure. So this is specific to the middle school and high school. Many students receive Wilson, the Wilson Reading Program. The more intensive recent Wilson Reading Program at the elementary, middle school, and high school. At the middle school, we have teachers being trained to become Wilson tutors, but they're not trained yet. So this is to cover the students who have that in their IEP while we get our teachers trained in that program.
It seems like it will be a good service to bring in-house.
Any other additional questions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We have nothing listed for item nine, Curriculum and Instruction. Item ten takes us to policy. Ten A, which is Policy Three Thirty-One, Job-Related Expenses. I will accept a motion to adopt Policy Three Thirty-One, Job-Related Expenses.
Shelton moved.
Snodgrass second.
Moved in seconded. Ms. Snodgrass, you have any remarks?
Um, I would, I'd actually like to hear if there were any revisions made between last meeting and this meeting. I was not able to attend the last November board meeting, so don't have any personal notes. No, no changes made.
Sorry, sorry. Ms. Snodgrass, the three policies that are there for final reading tonight, there were no revisions made after the final reading in, at the board.
Well, then, since these three policies are up for adoption tonight, the job-related expenses being the first one that this motion is for, it went through the policy committee probably a long time ago that we talked about it, because for anyone who doesn't regularly attend board meetings, the way that our policies work is that they go through a policy committee. The committee will study them beforehand and come with questions. There is a robust discussion that lasts exactly two hours. And we then move forward the policies to the board. But unlike other matters that come before the board, our policies actually demand two readings before they can be moved for adoption. So this one has been reviewed by the, at a general board meeting twice now. It's had a first and a second reading, and for tonight, it's up for accepting the changes that have been made to these policies. So a lot of discussion has already occurred on these, and my fellow board members didn't have additional review or revision on them since our last reading, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ten B takes us to Policy Six Seventeen, Petty Cash. I will accept a motion to adopt Policy Six Seventeen, Petty Cash.
Snodgrass moved.
Schwartz second.
Moved in seconded. Any additional discussion here?
Um, I, I actually quite like this, this tiny policy because it is a one-pager that, that actually is like, was a labor of love for petty cash. I mean, I think it went through the policy committee three times to get it to where it is, and I'm weirdly proud of this one because it, it's a revision to an existing policy, but the policy was from two thousand and ten. And as with all of the other policies that the committee reviews, the, one of the main objectives is to make sure that our policies align with our practice. And this one felt inaccessible, was confusing. None of us understood what petty cash meant when we were looking at it, and it has a very specific meaning in our district. And I believe that's now reflected here. So seems accessible to anyone who's wondering about it and what the policies are on it. So thank you to the committee for laboring through that one with me.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ten C is Policy Six Eighteen, Student Activity Funds. I will accept a motion to adopt Policy Six Eighteen, Student Activity Funds.
Snodgrass moved.
Shelton second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion?
This is another one I like because it was last revised in nineteen ninety-nine. So, you know, again, updating our policy book, making sure that everything is in line with practice, in line with current regulation, in line with, you know, best practices. And this one is, is another one that I like because after twenty-five years, things might have changed, which they did. But now this reflects our practice, so.
Thank you.
And I would just add that what we are approving tonight are the policies, but many of these have administrative regulations that go along. And as Ms. Snodgrass said, the goal is to make these policies usable, implementable, understandable. And the administrative regulations have a lot of that content on how to put the policy into practice.
Right. The administrative, the policies are really what the goals are and what the guidelines are, but the administrative regulations are the how-to. How does this get implemented? So looking at, you know, the policy is going to be your big picture, it's going to be your forest. And the administrative regulations are going to be those details. That's what's going to be when you can actually see the trees. What does that mean? Not all of our policies necessitate administrative regulations, but when there are details about making sure that the administration knows how this policy is supposed to get implemented, that's where we have those administrative regulations. And the difference is, and why we're not seeing them today, is that our policies, our board policies, the administrative regulations are just implementation of those. And so those don't need to actually be formally adopted. The administration takes care of implementing them. And if there are changes, those changes get brought to the board's attention and are, you know, we are notified when the administration is requesting a change, but that doesn't need to be voted on because it's not a change in policy so much as a change in how that policy is being implemented practically. So, thanks for pointing that out.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item six D is Policy Nine Fifteen, Booster Clubs and Organizations. I will accept a motion for the first reading of Policy Nine Fifteen, Booster Clubs, Organizations, and the corresponding AR.
Vitale moved.
Snodgrass second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, I would just like to hear whether there was more discussion at the policy committee meeting that happened earlier this month. This one has actually been through the committee. That would have been, I think, the third time. Was it twice? I think there might have been an informational item, and then it was discussed a couple of times. And at the previous committee from October, we wanted to bring it back to the committee to make sure that, I think we have somewhere around a dozen booster clubs. And I know that at that time, all the fall booster clubs had been contacted and advised that this was coming and, and, you know, were able to be collaborative on that. But then I think we were waiting for the other booster clubs, it was winter, spring. So just want to sort of hear what updates there were for the committee for this one. I'm glad to see it being brought for our first reading.
I think it was able to come forward for, for first reading, and I'll, I'll yield to Mr. Testa if there's anything else to add into it because there was an opportunity, there were many like questions at that prior meeting. So the last meeting that we just had, those questions were able to be answered. They didn't impact any of the wording. You'll recall, as you just mentioned, this is a new policy, so there's not revision that was going on. What, the only thing that you'll see here that is different is to create the consistency, booster club slash organization, because the terminology seemed to be interchangeable throughout the document previously. So now it's more, anytime it's referred to, it's the booster club slash, because some are booster organizations.
Okay, good to know. Important definitional point.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of discussion about this in, in the policy committee. And this is a new policy. It will impose, you know, some requirements on our community. And so I wonder if we could get maybe a brief, like, you know, just description of what this is accomplishing and possible.
So as booster clubs, they are somewhat representatives of the district, so this just makes sure that they're following guidelines that we have set as they are representing the district, that they're following our financial guidelines, that they're, you know, they're good custodians of the cash that they're handling for those booster groups. So it just kind of sets that procedure for them to make sure that they're in line with the way we would want them to operate if they were part of the district.
I know that one of the things that we discussed in policy was checking in with the, with the current booster clubs to see what sort of processes that they may be following now and to ensure that we are establishing a policy that's consistent with the current practice, that there wouldn't be any conflict. Can you also just speak to that a bit?
Sure. So most of the groups are already following most of these policies. It's now just putting it in writing that they should be. Mr. DeSina has worked with those groups to kind of just say, this is the expectation once it would be approved for the new, the new school, the new academic year. So just kind of getting them on board and giving them time to adjust if they're not doing anything currently that would be out of compliance with the policy.
Yeah, one of the examples of an activity that our booster clubs might do would be to have raffles or fifty-fifties in support of their fundraising efforts, and the policy then says they should have a Pennsylvania license to play games of chance. Is that something that our clubs have successfully already gotten those kinds of licenses when needed?
So it's something they'll be working toward. So it's something they'll be working towards as we get this approved, yes.
Um, I, I do think that the, the first sentence under guidelines is interesting because it almost, kind of, it, it feels like it's at odds with itself because it says that there's general guidelines, but that the organizations must follow them. And the way that I view general guidelines, they aren't strict. And so I just wonder whether we want to make that language clear. And we want to say booster clubs slash organizations must follow these rules, or call them rules or, or something. I mean, because when we're using the word must, that's mandatory. But again, when I see words like general guidelines, I'm thinking like, well, this is, you know, this is what they would like us to do, and maybe there's some wiggle room. So if there's not wiggle room, I think that we should change that language.
Right, or change the must to should.
Yeah, or if we don't want it to be strict, then it should be should, not must.
Good point. The other way.
Yeah. Yeah, that's why I would, you know, I would just take out the first part of that sentence. All booster clubs slash organizations must follow these rules. Must abide by the following rules or something like that. That's what I mean, but like it's, it's beginning, general guidelines makes it seem like it's a suggestion. So I'd like to remove that language. Otherwise, I'm happy to hear that the clubs have been consulted and are on their way to being in compliance with these. I think when we talked about it last time, this would be an expectation that the booster clubs or organizations would be, the expectation would be that they would begin following all these, these rules next school year. So it wouldn't be something that would go into effect immediately, even if three meetings from now we adopt it, it would be something that fall twenty twenty-five, these, this new policy would be, would have been in place for a couple of months. They would have gotten those licenses they need to get or whatever else. And, and then at that point, move forward with the new rules.
Yeah, we give them that time to organize.
Yeah. Do we need to put in a date or for the effective as of fall or the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year? I think that would be best to be explicit there.
Right, so this would be that lesser standard, not one necessarily like that were held to when we do our, our local annual audit here in the district.
I have a question under finances. Like this is letter L, booster clubs and organizations. It talks about the second sentence that booster clubs and organizations, and there's a typo there, it says clubs. That's wasn't what I was coming to though, but, but should strongly consider filing with the Commission on Charitable Organizations, Department of State, as a charitable nonprofit organization. I understand the language that we're strongly considering it, but is there any reason why a booster club would, would not want to, why we would not want all booster clubs to do that? Is that something based upon, we're thinking the amount of, perhaps, funds? Is it related to what, what the booster club or organization is about?
Or is it an onerous application or something? Is there something that we feel like there would be a barrier to that happening?
I guess in that first sentence where it's mentioning that they shall not use the district's tax-free number, I guess by going that route to filing as a charitable organization, they could get that tax identification number and be sales tax exempt and kind of the benefits of that type of organization.
You can't use ours, but you can go get your own.
Correct.
Okay.
I actually wonder if that first sentence should be the only thing in L and have, create an M.
Be its own.
And let it be its own because I, I would like to increase the strength on the strongly consider so that we really are wanting, especially since we're, they're not using the district, so. Making sure it's not missed, that this should be what you should do. Any other?
I'll just add that this policy, while we talked about some of maybe the cumbersome or onerous part, I think it's also worthwhile to mention the ways in which we appreciate and support these groups that, that make a lot of our clubs and activities possible. They bring a lot of resources and culture and enthusiasm to our school environment and appreciate the work of these sponsoring kinds of organizations.
Yeah, and I'll just say the reason that we are adopting or, you know, suggesting that the board adopt a policy here isn't because that the booster clubs have done anything wrong or that there's any sort of concerns about them. But it's really just because the prerogative of the policy committee is to implement best practices. And it is a, considered a best practice to have a policy for these organizations when schools have them. So, you know, we are very appreciative of these clubs, they absolutely add to our community and to our organizations in the school community. So we don't want it to seem like this is a punishment or anything like that. It's just that on the policy committee, we're looking at places that we are currently missing policies that is considered a good practice to have them, and this was one of the ones that we were missing.
And we get to read it again next time.
Yeah. All right, any other additional items to discuss? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are no items listed under other items, number eleven, we'll move on to number twelve. Public comments. So for this portion of public comments, members of the community are invited to speak on items that may or may not be listed on the agenda. But we do ask that when you come to the podium, you state your name, you confirm your residency in the district. You'll have three minutes to speak. A timer will be set. At the end of those three minutes, the alarm will sound, we'll ask you to conclude your remarks. And there was one person that signed up.
I didn't know if those, did those two people leave?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I'm going to go back to the two people, thank you, that were signed up earlier, Libby Matts. Yeah, they left. All right, and Nora Sullivan, just to be sure. Okay. All right, so then the person that signed up for this portion, Danielle Vitale.
Danielle Vitale, I live in the district. I was so upset at the last regular school board meeting in November when Dr. Ruscie used her superintendent's report to call me out for continuing to voice concerns about our school district. Every resident of Havreford Township has the right to voice their concerns about our school district. But as an elected school board member, it's actually my responsibility to share my concerns. That's why the school board exists, for oversight. I thank Dr. Ruscie that you've been able to do whatever you want, whenever you want it for so long, and now you're not dealing well with valid criticism. You have a problem with me continuing to reference school district rankings. You don't like that I keep mentioning that we were ranked eighth in the state just ten short years ago and are now ranked forty-ninth. You used your superintendent's report to state that the ranking system changed, and the ranking system did change, but you failed to mention that under the new system, Havreford was ranked, I believe, eighteenth and then twenty-third, forgetting that other districts who were ranked in the top ten with us somehow managed to stay on top. Can you at least explain that drop to forty-ninth? Elementary school parent in our district kindly contacted me to let me know that the district, as of this week, was still touting that we were twenty-third in the state on their district website. We've had months to fix that, and I'm not even quite sure why it was even up there in the first place when you said rankings weren't everything. Maybe you're right, it's unfair that I blame some administrators for failings that are happening under your watch. I've come to realize that since Dr. Kyle Ball left, there's been, there's been an error of, you've ushered in an error of mediocrity. My older sons were pushed and given challenge materials freely. I was given suggestions of extra books to purchase and further enrichment activities. In contrast, I had to beg you and Jeff Nesbit for a homework book that sat unused on a classroom shelf to come home from my youngest because it wasn't fair to others if some parents like myself helped their children at home. Well, that, that's what a parent does, and that's an example of your gross hijacking of equity. You removed classic literature like To Kill a Mockingbird from our curriculum and forced our beloved teachers who fought for it to go to mandatory trainings where they were called racist by a grifter who told them that he never even read To Kill a Mockingbird because he quote, refused to read white authors, end quote. You tried to shut down my effort to address antisemitism in our school and how it was grossly mishandled. And perhaps worst of all, when I came to leadership as a newer school board member, after being informed of an alleged disturbing behavior involving a teacher and students at one of our elementary schools, you did the bare minimum. I could only sleep at night because I took it upon myself to contact child mind. If anyone should be upset and angry, Dr. Ruscie, it's the citizens of Havreford Township.
There's no one else that signed up for this portion of public comment? But if there's anyone else that would like to speak? Please just state your name and confirm your residency in the district.
My name is Dan Kraut, I'm a resident of the district. And tonight I came here with several middle schoolers who were excited to advocate for, for solar panels and solar energy. And I understand the reason for postponing this discussion item to kind of, to a time when, when the entire board can be here and discuss it. But it's unfortunate that as a result, the kids couldn't speak because they're middle schoolers and it's kind of getting a little late for them. And they've got to be up at, you know, to catch the bus at seven for, for school tomorrow. And they were really excited about speaking to the school board tonight and, and they were really disappointed that they didn't get to speak. And so it would be great if exceptions could be made for kids who want to speak, even, especially in this case, because this was originally an agenda item. And just as we, I think we do want to encourage kind of that kind of civic engagement from our kids. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? All right. Item thirteen A, report on executive session. The board met on December the second to receive information and to discuss collective bargaining negotiation strategy with the Labor Relations Council. The board also met before tonight's meeting to discuss with council litigation involving an employee work-related injury. In addition to discussing with council agency business that if discussed in public would violate a lawful privilege or lead to the, to the disclosure of information protected by law. The next regular board meeting is scheduled to be held on January the ninth, twenty twenty-five, at seven thirty PM in the boardroom of the Oakmont Administration Building. Item fourteen B, can I accept a motion to adjourn the meeting?